All right.
I got our.
Ford, at the end, what is the board's text?
It did, so I'm.
That's okay, I just wanted to know if I had the right number.
Uh, Ford, information.
Yes, you do. I tried to send some message out over the holiday break and a couple of.
Uh, ju- just, just at the end when we go around the room for anyone.
I think I noticed that.
Are you with me?
Yep.
I could watch that data didn't go out until like a week later. I don't know what happened.
Uh, well, I saw a little of that too. No worries. I just wondered if I had your number right because I'm, I'm gonna try and call you.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock. I call this meeting to order. Uh, roll call.
Barkley.
Here.
Bates.
Here.
Kimbrel.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Rusterholt.
Here.
Okay, if everyone could please stand and remove their bonnets. Mr. Dale, could you listen to the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends. Of a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if we could just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. The preamble of the Constitution of the State of Colorado uh reads as this, "We, the people of Colorado, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of the universe, in order to form a more independent and perfect government, establish justice, ensure tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Do ordain and establish this constitution for the state of Colorado." Thank you. Uh, approval of gen- of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call. Barkley.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Rusterholt.
Aye.
Very good. Okay, we're coming to public comment now. Let me just say in advance, uh, I spent the, the day after Christmas, I got that bug, whatever it was, and I'm doing fine, but it, it, it doesn't want to let me go. So if I talk too much, uh, I'll start coughing. So I'm sure you're all happy. You won't have to listen to me talk too much. But I'm go- I'm going to ask, Cassie, would you please read the portion regarding public comments? Thank you.
Public comment. Please be aware that any personnel or individual student matters are considered confidential under Colorado law. It is out of respect of the law and our employees and students that we require those discussions take place privately in executive session. It is requested that individual comments be limited to three minutes or a total of fifteen for a total of the particular topic. The intent of the public comment is to give the Board of Education the opportunity to hear your comments. However, the Board will make no decision or take no action on public comment during the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, public comment time. Everyone's allowed up to three minutes with a forty-five minute max. How many have we got on the list tonight, Kelly?
Um, we have six, so all six will be able to speak.
Can I add myself or is it too late? I walked in a minute late.
Sure, you can, you can, you can get on that.
Have an extra number, Lindsay. The number seven, please.
Thank you. I just carry him around.
I know. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lindsay.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Kelly, draw her name.
First number is number four, Karen Francis.
Hear me? I hold the mic and you can pull it towards you.
There you go.
Thank you. Is that better? Much. Good evening. Thank you for the allotted three minutes. I want to address the fact that I'm speaking on public education. First and foremost, current has no place at these board meetings. I'm all for prayer, but do not believe it should be done here. It should done, be done before or after the BOE meeting. There must be separation from faith in our public education. If you want a faith-based education, there are schools for that. With your ideologies, you are essentially hurting minorities. Your high horse sense of morality and religious undertones don't belong in our public schools. While you claim transparency of parents' choice, it is anything but that. You hide behind your faith and yet that is spilling into our public schools. You have successfully alienated students. I speak for all minorities. Jewish, Buddhist, Hindu, African-American, atheist, and the LGBTQIA youth. When a child has been made to feel less than because of the way they were born or raised, you make them feel miserable. And I won't tolerate this type of behavior in making any child feel inconsequential, feel less than or inferior. You have no right to judge these children because they don't fit into your version of norm or what is acceptable. Mr. Witt, where were you when our teachers were called pedophiles and robbers? Where were you?
One minute.
You didn't stand up or issue an email debunking that notion. It spoke loud and clear and sent the message you agree. Shame on you for that. How you could not defend our beloved teachers in the past twenty-nine years, I have been involved in Woodland Park School Districts. I am ashamed of the superintendent's lack of support for my teachers. I have had six children attend Woodland Park, uh, Woodland Park Schools for the past twenty-nine years. In the past two years, my child has confided, confided in me that they are now experiencing bullying like they've never seen before because of your actions. You're making a welcoming community for bigotry, hate, and bullying directed at everyone that is different. I have not seen this in my twenty-nine years of being a part of these schools. Your version of Christianity is your belief, not mine and many others'. If I wanted a faith-based education, I would have sent my child to a private school.
Are you, are you almo- are you almost done?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
You are welcome. I chose public education. It should be just that, public. I worry that you'll never be accepting, but at the very least, the least you could do is be tolerant.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is number six, Logan Russe.
I hope you all had a wonderful break.
Hope you did too.
Thank you. I didn't, but appreciate your condolences and wishes. Boy, what is there to say? You guys have really, it all happened to you. You didn't miss a beat. Lessons ended, then you move straight on forward, right? Gone with Kevin, make sure that you can keep your playbook in place, right? You're going comfortable about that with, because you probably should be, because you're damaging a lot of students' lives right now because of that action. And I know that you don't care because that, you showed it to me when you fired me and you didn't even have the balls to read the letter yourself. The poor HR specialist, because of, remember, we didn't have an HR director at that point. The HR specialist had to read my letter. Come on. You really couldn't do that yourself? I am ashamed to say that I came from a school district right now. You guys have. You've shown me a lot of things that I never thought that I would see in this world. I expected to see people that stood up for what is right.
One minute.
That stood up for other people's rights, that stood for minorities' rights, that stood up and said, "That is wrong what you are doing." "It is wrong what you are doing." And most of you won't even make eye contact with me half the time because you know that it is true. You know that you are here under an agenda trying to manipulate these people, trying to manipulate these voters, this county, into what you guys think, what you guys believe is going to make it a better world. I promise you that pushing people apart, that not allowing inclusion, that destroying diversity, that killing creativity, that promoting violence, and promoting not listening to people is not how you make the world a better place and is not the correct direction. You guys are on the wrong side of history.
Thank you, Logan.
And everybody will know it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
The next speaker is number three, Gail Garrick.
Say the name again.
Gail Garrick.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank Principal Kevin Burr for his accomplishments since two thousand and eighteen. There was an increase in SAT scores for the past five years. He expanded course offerings. He wrote a grant that allowed four teachers to get their master degree so they could teach college-level courses. There was increasing career opportunities where students could graduate with industry certificates. U.S. News and World Report recognized Woodland Park High School as one of the best high schools in Colorado. Woodland Park High School received a Level One certification from Marzano High Reliability Schools for a safe, supportive, and collaborative culture. Secondly, though, I'll mention his firing brought notice to all the dysfunction of this board and superintendent. Why weren't all the board members notified of the decision to fire the principal before the email was released? Is Ken Witt going to pick and choose which board members are allowed to know about district matters and decisions before it comes public if he does? Is this board going to tolerate a superintendent who is this unprofessional and unethical? In the announcement of new leadership, Ken Witt states, "Woodland Park Schools are committed to a laser focus on academic success of our students while always honoring parents' rights, recognizing the trust our parents place in Woodland Park School District to educate their children without undermining the values of probably their home." Doesn't it sound as if Ken Witt cares more about parents than the students? What about the values of the possible fifty percent of the district that really don't want what he's doing? And could this be Ken Witt installing the political and religious ideology he and Brad Miller planned for a long time? Whatever he's planning, it's a sad commentary for our schools.
Right, number one, Victor La- is it LaBarrio?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm a strong advocate for the trades skills. So that's the purpose of my discussion here. What I've learned is that in pa- that past school boards, for some reason, did away with the variety of the trades classes that were offered in our schools. This at a time when the demand for skilled trade workers has now, has increased tremendously across the country. One Bureau of Labor statistic I found said that there are over eight million job openings across the country for skilled trades people. Last year, I got the opportunity to meet Mr. Gary Adamson and what a tremendous asset he is to this, to our district. And I admire that he stood in the gap when the trades programs were done away with. He's the teacher for the welding class and now he has a woodworking class. The evidence of his success is in students winning the state skills challenge last year and then going on to compete and place nationally. I know that he has expanded the welding programs I just said with the woodworking class. And I'll have to say to the community, I got an opportunity to talk to the students as well. They were all very polite. They were engaging. They were proud to show the work that they, that they were working on. And I can tell you, I hear a lot of mention about critical thinking. You want to see a kid critically thinking, go, go look at the class. But it really was the previous school board that had started to work on the trades and made some steps to provide funding, but had expanding the offers. I have also learned and quite pleased that the Merit Academy offers a welding class now. My purpose for being here is to request that you consider broadening the offers of the skills trades. I think classes that cover electrical and plumbing can help to meet some of.
One minute.
Business needs, but the classes could also extend to cybersecurity or something along the lines of like the culinary arts class that we discussed earlier. Careers in the trades are no longer a consolation prize. Those are very viable and well-paying careers. But I'm also not just here to make recommendations, but also to offer my kind and any help that the school district needs. I know it takes time. I, I recognize that it takes time to set up these programs and also to find skilled teachers. But my contact details are there and I'm here to help because I do believe that adding these opportunities to students are important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir, could you just tell me your name again?
Victor LaBarrio.
Okay, I got it right. Thank you, Victor. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is number five, Trina Hoffling.
Hello. Uh, first, I'd like to thank the school teachers who got the NCAA courses back up to standard that are being taught this year, so it doesn't negatively impact our students. So I want to thank them for that publicly. Um, and I trust they'll continue to do that with the courses that come up next year. I'd also like to thank Gail for her comments because she took all the wind out of my sails, which is fine. I have a request of this board to consider changing your procedures around how you don't interact with us. I have been an educator for forty-plus years and been involved in many school boards across three states. And I've never had a school board be so non-engaged with us. The negative comments you've heard tonight come from that refusal to interact with us. I would like the procedural change to be in this process so that you actually talk to us and answer questions that are asked of you. My question for you tonight is about human resources and your hiring and firing procedures of both your superintendent and your principal. I'd like to know, without breaking executive privilege, how the decision to get rid of this principal was made and was our new executive, our new board director, who is an expert and an active practitioner in human resources, was she consulted, involved in that process? That's what I want to know. And I also would like to see more transparency from this board because last month I walked out skeptical but hopeful that what you said, Mr. Rusterholtz, would hold. And within twenty-four hours, it was violated in multiple ways by policies and procedures coming out that I'm guessing.
One minute.
Our new board director did not even know was happening. And I know for a fact, no parent knew. And that's just bad practice and poor leadership. So I'm asking you to consider changing your procedures to be more engaged with your parents, not just the parents you agree with. Thank you.
Our next speaker is number two, Shannon Valaro.
Good evening. Um, I liked the trades talk. It was nice. I'd like to include that maybe cosmetology is a big thing that really could help Woodland Park.
Can you do something with my hair?
I mean, let's bring him in. They'll do something. I would like to say also with the engagement of the community, she is right. I, I mean, we moved to a small town from a large area. The district I came from had seventy-two thousand students. And it, I never went more than two days without having a response from a superintendent, a school board member, or anything. So I've just, I'll go with that. Um, I wanted to talk about our BOCs because I know that Ms. Patterson has, she is representing us in Woodland Park. But from my understanding, when talking to BOCs, we have an open spot that our next meeting is January twenty-third. And from the information I got from BOCs, usually that spot is filled at the December or January board meeting here. So I was just wondering who will take that spot? Is that spot open? I just don't know. So I was asking that. And I'd also like, if we could post somewhere what qualifications or what the board looks for, for those representatives. I know that, um, the other districts, they have people who have been special education teachers, people who are very knowledgeable in IDEA and all the federal laws that go along with special education. So I was just wondering if we could somewhere post that or get that information out. That would be great. Um, I wanted to also say that I really liked how you take time to.
One minute.
To talk and, and give accolades and different things like that to students who have done things. Could we invite them here so they could hear that? Because I have gone and talked to some of those students and then said, "You were talked about at the board meeting. That is so awesome." And they're like, "I had no idea. I don't even know." So if at the beginning of the meetings, so they don't have to stay for the whole thing, invite their parents or their teacher or somebody so they know that they're appreciated. I think it would bring a lot of morale back to these meetings. So those are my thoughts and I hope to hear from you. Thank you.
Let me speak to one thing, Ms. Laurel. Uh, we have selected the other BOCs member. Sue is going to continue to do that. She has a good knowledge of it. And Cassie Kimbrel is the new other board member. And it's very fitting. There was a lot of thought that went to, went into it in that, I don't know how many of you know, but Cassie has a special needs child. She's a little sweetheart. And so I think Cassie's a very fitting person to assume that and she gladly took it. So yes, we.
How, can I ask how that came about? Like, when did y'all get together to make that decision?
Well, there was, there was discuss- I talked to board members individually and inquired about things they would like to do and didn't want to do.
Okay.
So I.
It was not included in any of that conversation.
Okay. Uh, and, and I, I did not talk to.
That's distressing. That's very distressing to know.
I, I have to say, Ms. Barkley, you're very hard to get hold of.
Oh, my God.
We will, we will work on that.
Okay. I just know last, uh, prior times, it was discussed in like an open meeting. So that's, I'm just going by what I've seen online, like looking. So.
Well, what I did.
That's what I was asking.
Okay.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. President, may I speak for me?
Sure.
When we, when our prior, um, previous superintendent was here, he appointed us. It was not discussed. When I came onto the board, the appointments were made by the superintendent at that time. It was not publicly, uh, discussed at any meeting. Our superintendent appointed each of us to the.
And I got appointed. I started, I got a calendar invite, so it was after the December meeting and I was going to speak to that after. But yeah, it came up January twenty-third, I believe.
So again, the teachers.
Yeah, January twenty-third is the next.
Were examined for transparency and information sharing.
And.
It's just nice because you represent us, that's all.
Well, I had a lot to do with all of this.
Yeah.
And I knew that I needed to get names to the superintendent by a deadline.
Right.
And so I worked towards that and I just quizzed some of, some of the board members that I thought would be a good fit for that. So, uh, but there was a deadline we had to hit and Mr. Witt and I did communicate about that.
And I think we could say that they don't have to be board members to be on the board of the BOCs. I know some of the other representatives are.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker this evening is Kreshid Rogers.
Thanks for letting me talk. My name is Kreshid Rogers. I have a few different topics to touch on today. Uh, first is the termination of high school principal Kevin Burr's contract. I was deeply disturbed that Principal Burr was dismissed on the Friday before Christmas with no explanation to district families and I know personnel issues. Uh, but the timing honestly, to me, felt cruel. And the fact that the notification to parents didn't even mention his name also seemed really hurtful and disrespectful. Uh, the fact that there was no executive session for the board to be apprised of this before the termination, nor is there one scheduled tonight makes me very confused. Uh, like, is my understanding that the cancellation of a contract must include the board incorrect? Like, I don't, if so, let me know. I also felt very badly that no acknowledgement was given to Kevin's accomplishment. In a recent letter to the editor, I highlighted some of these and Gail highlighted some tonight. Um, and. And some of those do include the introduction of cybersecurity as course offering and certification in culinary. So I'm super grateful for that. It's my feeling that the process by which Kevin was terminated was meant to instill fear and act as a kind of warning, and that type of leadership absolutely breaks my heart. This leads me into my next topic, which is our superintendent's contract. I understand that in hiring Mr. Witt, the board was looking to shake things up by hiring a businessperson that was more outside the field of education than in. But I would ask that as we move forward, you ask parents in the district
One minute.
what they're looking for in their superintendent. I personally would like someone with training and professional experience and credentials in education administration because school is not a business, and there are many nuances to school finance, education, law, et cetera. I would like someone who is present on a full-time basis and someone who leads with positivity and inspiration. My final topic is budget. I would request that copies of the budget revision be made available at this meeting. I don't know if they're at the table, I didn't have time to look. My recollection is that Brian used to do that. I'm also concerned that considering the October count, we are approximately a hundred and forty students under the projection on which the original budget was based. So how do we make up for that shortfall? I'm not sure what the agenda item appropriation resolution means, but if it means taking more out of the fund balance to cover this, I would ask board members to ask a lot of questions around this. To my understanding, we have spent our fund balance down to approximately eight million, and we haven't dipped below this, or we haven't felt it prudent to for over, at least over eight years, I'm not sure how long. So if there's a decision to do so, I hope it's well thought out and sustainable. Thank you again for allowing me to speak when I was a minute late.
Is that it, Kelly?
That is it, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Okay, next item, the consent agenda. Is, do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
I actually had a question on that one.
Okay.
Just reading through the resignation section.
Point of order, you have a motion, you need a second before you enter discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you.
Second.
Okay, now it's fully ahead.
I won't name names because of obviously confidentiality, but I noticed there was personnel who was listed as a resignation, who was actually terminated, and the date seems to be incorrect. So I don't know how, what the process would be for correcting that.
Yes, sir, you have, Mr. Witt will respond to you.
We can, I mean, you know, I don't want to name names for you, so, but
Without going into legal detail, the contents on the consent agenda are accurate, correct according to settlement.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
The details changed because of the settlement agreement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Witt. Okay, roll call. Anyone else got any comments? Roll call, Kelly.
Barclay.
Hi.
Bates.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Ruster-Holz.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, discussion and information, Mr. Witt, item A, board retreat.
Yellow tab?
Yellow.
Too fast, it's stuck together, okay. So from the last meeting, we had established that you wanted a meeting in February. I pressed for dates on the third and the twenty-fourth. We were able to get a location for the twenty-fourth. And so the present recommendation is, and we have reservations for, a meeting on Saturdays, September, I'm sorry, Saturday, February, the twenty-fourth, nine to one P.M., and twelve to one will probably be lunch. The Lodge at Cathedral Pines, with the address stated. We had mentioned two facilitators, I didn't get another name in time for the packet, and you had already used one before for a, I don't know, you mentioned a couple of points of history. We chose the other, which is Ross Izert, as our recommendation.
I have a question. We had discussed some local venues, and just was wondering, we had a couple of places that we had discussed, you know, even up at the Lodge, Forest Edge, or I was just curious how this came, how we came to this location.
I second that, yeah. See, I thought we were going to discuss the planning of it at this meeting.
Feel free, this is the district recommendation.
Okay.
You can make changes to it if the board wishes.
Comments?
Well, I think having it local as much as possible would be a good idea. Just for making sure that people who want to attend, since it is an open meeting, have the ability to do so easily. And then, you know, just making sure we're spending district money within the town, I think is a good idea as well.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'm open for either or because it is a retreat, it's for us to really to get our ideas. So if there's a place that we can go and it was open, I want to explore that. I know last time we've had it here, but I'm opening traveling elsewhere too, so. It is called a retreat for a reason. I talked to other school board directors and they've said they've had similar, they try to like, just really get together and have a bonding of what, you know, the vision is, and coming from all of us as parents or grandparents or community members, what that vision is and to discuss. Depending on the facilitator, so. I don't know much about the facilitator, I sort of know the name, but I'm very open, I've heard about him, and yeah. We discussed his name last December as well, so.
Is there anything you can say about, I don't know, I don't know
The only point I'd make on the location is, given that this isn't a regular meeting, but the attempt here is to have a retreat, we can have a more relaxed atmosphere and kind of change the, change the setting, if you will. It's pretty common for boards to take their retreat a little further away and change the venue, change the setting a bit. And my personal recommendation would be to do that.
It's the one meeting that we have, I think, for the
Is that, just curious, like, I know that the other ones, there was somebody videoing the other meetings. Is this also a videoed meeting or not?
No, as a retreat, we do not typically do that.
That was, that was somebody, okay.
I've got a couple of comments. I, I hear both sides of the situation, but this is a retreat, and I, I would like to get a little ways out of town, it's, it's not far. You know, if we, oh gosh, I can think of some places I'd like to go, but I don't know that I can afford to, to transport myself there. But I would like to get out of town, and, you know, we just came through an election, and I think I had a meeting at most every location in this town. So I was looking forward to getting out of town and not going too far, so that's, that's my personal opinion on the issue.
And everyone, as I understand, everyone is invited to go.
It's an open meeting.
It's an open meeting.
It is an open meeting.
It is open.
I'm open to a retreat, that's the key word here, it's a board retreat, it's open to the public. It'll be nice to get away, it's in Colorado Springs, it's not on the other side of Colorado. People travel every day to school here from Colorado Springs, and, and I support where the location is, and I look forward to going.
Do any of you that were on the board at that time for the last retreat, do you remember what the public participation was in that retreat?
Yeah.
There were very few people.
It was fewer, like, the one that was local had less people than the one that was attended, I think, out in the Springs.
Oh, really, you're right, you're right, it was.
It's just
Not an issue.
I do have a question, is there anything that you could say just about Ross? How do you, I don't know how to pronounce his last name.
Is there?
Is there?
Is it with an L?
Is there anything you could say about him?
Yeah, I've, I've been at a number of meetings where he has facilitated over the years. He's thoughtful, he's well-known in the education community broadly, on education policy in the state, as well as some other states as well. So he has both the context and the intelligence to leave it to the board to make decisions, but keep it steered in the direction of the agenda.
I know, one of the questions I would want to discuss is the new laws that come out every year, those policies and what we need to update. I'm hoping he will be able, it sounds like he will be able to address some of those issues.
He might kibbitz on them a little bit, but you'll, you'll also certainly have your attorney there for legal advice, but both would be true.
Okay.
I think it would be nice
This is not a, this is not a public discussion.
It never is, Mr. Witt, it never is.
To be in the community. To give some of the tax dollars back to a business here in town.
Ladies and gentlemen, I put copies of conduct of board meetings here, and that, please take a copy of it and read it. We are not out of line with what the Colorado Department of Education says for public meetings. This is not out of the ordinary, so
What you resist persists.
Pardon?
We just want to have a voice, sir, that's all. To have a conversation instead of being shut out of the conversation, that's all we're asking for.
Thank you.
I did have another suggestion for facilitator. Her name is Rachel AMSpoker, she is the CASB staff attorney. And I spoke with the representative at CASB, who is the place you went to to get that information on, on conduct at board meetings. And so she would be able to go over kind of board self-assessments, so roles and responsibilities, characteristics of effective school boards, as well as communication and community engagement. So working through how to work with the community, making sure everyone understands open meeting laws and CORA. So also legal things, which is what you wanted.
What's her last name?
AMSp, A-M-S, I'm sorry, AMSpoker, A-M-S-P-O-K-E-R.
I apologize, Keegan is right, it's Colorado Associated School Board, not Colorado Department of Education. What would we do at this point, Kelly? Would we vote on this?
No, it's a discussion, it's discussion.
That's right, it's a discussion item.
Discussion and basically just consensus.
I'm sorry, I knew that.
Yeah, if, if you feel like you can call a consensus, do so. You can of course ask for a motion if you
Do we have information on fees for the person that you recommended, the Izert?
Yes, I think the fee is two hundred and fifty for the facility and twelve hundred for the facilitation. Which are both within my experience reasonable.
Keegan, do you have any idea about the fees for Rachel? Have you talked to her?
Yeah, I did, so it was
Did you talk to her?
I didn't speak with her, but fees, since we're no longer a part of the Colorado Association of School Boards, we don't get the membership fee anymore, but it was one thousand five hundred for the
That's usually for facilitators, it's about, you know, a thousand to two, so that's not within the range, so.
Would you like to take a motion and take a vote tonight, or would you like to put it as an action item? We don't, we don't have, we're not going to have a lot of time left coming up.
You don't have to vote.
Yeah, I, I need to double check because at the last meeting, we had discussed February third as the date. I know we had thrown out some other dates as well, but I will need to check and see if Rachel would be available on the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, rather, because I had asked about the third.
Just, as a point of order. If you like to make a decision tonight, the president sets the agenda, and you can certainly do that.
I think I would like to do that. If we put this off for another month, it's going to affect our people's calendars. Do I have a motion to take a vote on this tonight?
So moved.
A second.
For a second.
Okay, roll call.
Hold on just a second, sorry.
On, on
When are we voting on?
Yeah, what is the vote?
I'm, I'm, I'm just going to say it.
Okay, so who, who did the motion, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the
Oh.
Did you do the motion, Sue? I said so moved, and then Sue's.
Just a second.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The, the motion that she is speaking to is to have this retreat on February twenty-fourth from nine A.M. to one P.M. at the Lodge at Cathedral Pines. And, pardon? With Ross Izert as the facilitator. That being said, let me take the motion, do the motion again. Do we have a motion for that plan?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Discuss, just, just a point of discussion, I just want to make my position clear on it. I, first of all, I want to say, I, I'm not opposed to it, I'm familiar with the Lodge there, and I don't know anything about this gentleman. So first of all, I just want to know, I'm not opposed to it, but I would have just liked to have a little bit of conversation before this, just so we each individually know, I know we can't sit around and talk about it, but just to have some correspondence going out, that would have been nice, to be able to look up and see, you know, we had a suggestion, maybe somebody else had a suggestion. So I, I don't, I don't mind voting in favor of this, I have no reason not to vote in favor of it. I just wish that the process would be a little bit inclu, I hate to use the word, but inclusive with the other board members, so that, that's my only say, it's not, I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying, I, I wish that it could have been a little bit more that way.
Am I mistaken that we are supposed to send recommendations to you before this meeting?
Yes.
What I thought
Which is the last meeting.
The last meeting.
And I named the two that I had, so you got a list to look at.
Yeah.
I was wrong.
So I just want to, I mean, I recall that, maybe that's why I was trying to verify, I'm glad we're discussing it
Oh, yeah, I am too.
because if we recall, it's a bit different, but it was my recollection that we were supposed to recall. I had looked up Ross, I know a little bit about him, and his policies and what we're going for. Like I said, some of the law changes and looking, since we are a policy governance board, going over those and we'll be addressing those. So the retreat is important. I, again, it's a retreat, we've stayed in town, we've had less attendance, we go down there, there's been more, it's, I'm open, so.
Well, then I apologize that I just didn't recall that, I'm sorry.
No, I'm glad we discussed it.
I don't, I, you know, I sent my recommendation to Ken Witt before the meeting, I mean, it was earlier today. I wasn't aware there was a specific date of a deadline where we had to have that information prior to today's meeting. I figured today as a, a meeting, we would be discussing it.
As, as a matter of fact, practice, just because we all try to make sure that we're, we understand how we operate,
Yeah.
if at all possible, if we're going to send information that should be considered in a board meeting, we should get it by board packet time, which is
Well, the board packet came out yesterday too, so that
Due to weather inclination of the New Year's Eve, so I know that's, trust me, it's, that normally does not happen, so I don't want to
Right, because
Normally it's the Friday before
Right, because before the last meeting, when the board packet came out, it said if you had anything to add or anything you wanted to discuss, to send it out at that point, but we'd only got the packets yesterday, so I
Yeah, that's because staff only returned on Monday.
Yeah.
So there's a motion on the table.
Motion on the table.
Motion, second discussion, should all vote.
Any other discussion before a vote? Kelly?
All right. Barclay?
Nay.
Bates?
Aye.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Ruster-Holz?
Aye.
I did send an email out to all of the board members, just to make sure they had seen the email from Kelly. It was just redundancy about the fact why the agenda hadn't gone out. And I did mention that normally that would go out on a Friday. District was closed Friday, and then Monday was a bad weather day. That's the reasoning why it was late in going out, and that normally wouldn't happen, Ms. Barclay. Okay. Next item, superintendent's contract. Mr. Witt has expressed interest in, in signing a new contract. I had spoken briefly with a couple of board members about that. I did a little research myself, I knew this was coming up, we, we talked about it, and I was reminded by a couple people last month. You know, what, what are you guys' plans? It's time to do something if you're going to. The, the research that I did, and it's something to consider, I want to go around the room and get some feedback on, on each of yours' thoughts. But some items to consider is, I checked, and the, the minimal cost, if, if we go bare bones, to do a superintendent search is eleven thousand dollars. And I've also been told that there is a very limited And I've also been told that there is a very limited pool of candidates that, that would, would fit where we've been trying to go as a school district, as far as a superintendent candidate. Let's not say there's not one out there, but it's, it's a limited pool of candidates. So that being said, let's go around the room and, and just, I would like to have a discussion on this and have each of your inputs. So you, would you like to start, Cassie?
I can go, yeah, that's fine. We had talked about superintendent's contract and, you know, going forward, and as far as normally, a lot of the groundwork starts in October, the election happened, and we really need to consider that having the stability for our district. And Superintendent Witt has helped this board and district with our primary goal and sort of succeeding with the academic success and just focusing on the outcome. And, you know, the teachers are also focused on that, you can see it through all the great work that's happening. And, and he has been able to overcome some diverse challenges and able to respond to situations, solve our best needs. And, you know, some of that is just the bus routes and, you know, simple as that, and providing and really including, being inclusive with all schools. Like, we need to not have that.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time.
Could you use your microphone?
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry.
Everybody?
And so, um. That's pretty much my thoughts on that as well. And also budgeting within our means, like you having, you know, overall, just looking at our budget, being able to not exceed it, but also within the means, it's like we were, we just heard in public comment, our enrollment was out a little bit, and we're able to still function with the district, and we're not overusing that, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Roaster Holtz, comments?
Yeah.
Microphone?
Microphone. Thank you for the reminder.
That does help, thank you.
I apologize.
Well, it helps, too, 'cause when you guys are doing public comment, we have to say the same thing, so appreciate it, thank you.
I understand, I've been able to hear very well.
We need a microphone, class.
All right.
It's not intentional, I promise, it's just an awkward movement.
So to be clear, the topic of discussion on this is about the, what we think in regard to extending Mr. Witt's contract, and the reasons why we would be in favor of that, or whether we're looking for advertising for a new superintendent, seeing what, who may be available for that, okay. I think our school district is at a very, shall I say, unique place in, in, in its own history and in, let's just say, the United States. We've made the news how many times?
Once or twice.
Once or twice. So my thought is, there's a lot of things that I, that I do like that Ken has done. There are some things that I would like to change, but that's not for discussion tonight. I am curious to see if there are, or how many candidates that there would be that we would consider for, for hiring. It is another bare bones, eleven thousand dollars, and it's just, you know, looking for, for someone. Some of the rea- some of the reasons that, that I would would want to retain Mr. Witt is, I know that there are some, we, we just now have a leadership and a team at the administration level where we can start building some level of stability. I know that that seems ridiculous at this point to some people in, in the audience, some people in our, in, within our constituents. We're pretty split right down the middle with that. So I'm trying to be a representative of everyone without compromising my own virtues and values. So I would like to say first that I would like to mention some of the things that I see as strengths with Ken. Ken, and maybe just one, because I don't wanna take everybody else's thunder. When we first hired Ken, as we go back and visited, visit history, that I was really trying to get someone who would come to be a CEO, who would be an agent of change, and that we would work hand in hand with the superintendent. That didn't happen, but I was still in favor after many meetings, private meetings with Ken, out to lunch. I was impressed with what he had done and his experience, his nearly ten years of experience at ER BOCES, doing very creative things in education, of course, organizing other people's thoughts and bringing them in, even like what we had talked about, like what you talked about tonight, is increasing our vocational program here at the school. I agree, that, we, so anyway, the creative nature is what really brought me to want to vote for Ken. There were some other candidates that I did like, but I liked that Ken was local, he has a track record of creativeness. So I have a lot more that I could say, but I've just, if somebody else doesn't hit on one of those topics, then I certainly will, will come back around.
Thank you, Mr. Roaster Holtz. Ms. Barkley?
Yeah, so you mentioned that it would cost eleven thousand dollars to search for a new superintendent, is that what you were saying?
Yes, to, to go through the process of searching for and seeking out other candidates, yes.
Where, what, what is factoring into that?
Well, the, I, I don't know much about that process. I was involved in, in the previous election, but I spoke to our attorney and, and asked him what the, what the process would be and, and what the general cost was, and that was the answer that I got from attorney, from attorney.
That was also the number approximately, correct me if I'm wrong, that the previous superintendent also mentioned.
It was close, I think it was sixteen.
Was Delantino, like.
That came from, from.
Delantino, they also said that around, around that time, was it sixteen?
I'm trying to remember sixteen thousand, somewhere around that, but, I mean, if you're do, there's all different levels that you could do, to very expensive, to.
There was just an approximate amount of like.
That I recall.
If you had hired a search agent, or depending on how you did it, there was different processes and routes that you could go through.
Well, and, and for the clarity, that was the baseline. You could, there were many other levels of, of what you would ask from in a search, but that, that was kind of the bare bones number, and it's not a hard number, it was just.
Sure, no, I'm just like, 'cause, you know, recruitment is what I, what I do. So I was just wondering what was, what costs were factored into that, because, I mean, if you were hiring an agency to do the search and then they were taking like a percentage fee, then I could see where that would come in. But we could certainly do it in-house, I would think, using our internal HR people, making sure we're posting it on all public locations that don't cost any money, and see what people we get through those avenues, you know, calling people we know. Like, there's, there's lots of ways you can recruit where it doesn't cost money outside the time to actually interview.
I believe that with, with my limited knowledge, I think that's a nationwide search. I'm not sure we could accomplish that here locally by ourselves. And if we'd be really tapping the pool, the, that I'm told is limited, but if it's limited, then I think the search would have to be larger. And so, that's just my thoughts.
I have a request of you, Mr. Bates, could you utilize the resources of your board? We have an expert.
Ma'am, this is not a time for pu- for public comment.
I'm just tired of you having excuses to not listen to any of us, including one of your board members.
I'm listening, ma'am, thank you.
I'm leaving, I'm outta here, I get it.
Go ahead, Keegan.
No, I was just thinking, I, you know, I'm not saying we definitely need to hire a, a different person, but I think it's worth, you know, due diligence to search and see what's out there, you know, and, and see what kind of personnel we can have and, and actually go through that process, and I don't think it needs to cost us that much.
Ms. Patterson?
And I'm willing to help out with that.
I see no reason to not to extend Mr. Witt's contract. I'm satisfied with his performance. Superintendent Witt has hired an incredible facilities manager who has identified various issues with the facilities that need to be repaired or replaced, and is working hard to make that happen, number one. Number two, a very successful task was taken on by Aaron Salz and Jason Ferris with the south, with the south parking lot that was on private property, negotiating with the owners to gift it to the school. Mr. Witt prioritized safety and provide, to provide stronger security of personnel and facilities, while Ouland Park Police Department is short-staffed and spread thin. He increased the funding to the SPED to increase the additional supports of student needs. He hired a certified public accountant to manage the district's financial well-being. Attended to the recent research and latest return to the K through six elementary schools, as many systems are also doing the same, in order to promote the confidence of those sixth graders. That's the latest trend to return a K six versus K five for the sixth grade maturity level. He brought in the capturing hearts. He ensured all students within the district are able to get to their district's school of choice through universal busing offerings. He implemented the American birthright standards, which I am grateful to see that the high school courses submitted to the NCAA, the National Collegiate Athletic Association, and the, and the association's approval of world geography, world history, and economics. He provided liability insurance for the Ouland Park School District staff who may need it and can rely on it. He provided family-centered mental health supports for students through the mindset, ensuring that the parents are making the healthcare decisions of their children. He brought in capturing kids, the Capture Development Program, integrated across all of our schools, all of our district run schools. And he ensured one of the fastest-growing schools in the region has ample space to meet the demands of local parents, while considering the capacity impacts within the district facilities and schools. So I think that's a pretty significant list, board members, and my recommendation is to go, move forward and secure another two years of Mr. Witt's contract.
Can you at least make it full-time, if you're paying full-time?
Please, please do not speak.
And let me add to that, yes, thank you for mentioning that. Mr. Witt is not bound by the clock, he's a results superintendent, which many superintendents at different school districts are. He's always, he is always easily accessible for any of us board members, and I've talked to many staff. So he's results-oriented, and I am satisfied with our superintendent.
Have we utilized any sort of like assessment, staff assessments, or asked them how they feel about it? You know, as, as board members, we're here representing the school and, and the constituents, have we reached out, done any sort of surveys, or, you know, things of that nature to help us make our decisions?
No, we have not. I have, what I was, because the, if we were to go to a, to do a search, we'd have to be considering it pretty quickly. What I'm gonna ask for tonight is that we visit with Mr. Witt over the next week, and we evaluate this. Unfortunately, we can't just all get together and do it, we could go, we just can't. So a number of the board members are gonna assist me in working on his contract and seeing if we can find middle ground that we're all satisfied with. And then I want to, I want to call a special board meeting next Wednesday night to talk about our results and, you know, potentially have a solution which direction we'll go. So I will ask for a motion on that in just a moment, but that'd give us a week's time to see what it is Mr. Witt would like to have in a new contract. We'll run it around the board members and, and come back next Wednesday night, Wednesday night with a special meeting at six o'clock here in this room.
Mr. President. I just have a, I just have a, a question. There is a way that we can all meet together if we have executive session. I don't know if you had thought of that or not, we could all, since we're discussing a contract and an evaluation of our only employee, we could have an executive session meeting and discuss all of those things without.
Or you could do it in a special meeting.
Go ahead, Mr.. I, I just wanna point out that I think you just stated that you'd like to call a special meeting. That would probably be in executive session, so you could do just that. And you don't need a vote in that regard, the president of the board can call a special meeting by law.
Right, anytime.
Okay, thank you for that.
Anytime.
And there isn't any reason, that was my thought as you were speaking, we, we could certainly, as, as that, for that special meeting, go into executive session ahead of coming back out here. So that, that is an option for us. But it, it's a week's time, and it'll give us a chance to see exactly what Mr. Witt is asking for and, and communicate with the rest of the board as, as we are able to, and discuss some of these things. So should we go into executive session next Wednesday, people aren't just coming in there blind as to what's, what's been discussed.
I'm available next Wednesday for that.
All right, what about the rest of you? Are you available next Wednesday?
Yes.
Well then, I wanna call a special meeting for next Wednesday night at six o'clock in this, at this venue, and we'll proceed from there. We'll see what kind of progress is made over the next week. I will keep each of you apprised of, of what's, of what's being discussed, and then we'll come together next Wednesday.
And I just want, you're going to.
Sorry. I'm like putting a wall in the.
Yeah, I know, I, I wanted to put this into a curve, and now everywhere.
Felt very awkward.
We need more of a curve.
Everywhere I, Cassie, I move, Cassie moves, so I.
I'll sit over here.
I see you enough that it is.
Okay, so I just want, you're going to reach out to each board member and have a discussion with just each board member or with you and Mr. Witt and a board member, how's that, how's it gonna work?
How I took it was, if there was any, if you had any, correct me if I'm wrong, I just heard if you had any developments that you would contact us, but then we were going to meet next week for an executive session.
Right, oh, oh, we, only two of us can meet at a time.
Right.
To discuss this. But as the discussions go on, I will reach out to the rest of the board, so they are up to speed as to where this is going. Or if, if we hit a, hit a dead end, but I will follow up with the other board members that aren't part of a, a particular meeting. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure we all are.
I, I think that's important, we've got about a week's time, and.
I'll make myself available anytime.
Thank you. Any other questions, anyone?
Um, I have a couple. So the, so you're going to meet with Ken in this week, and.
And early next week.
Okay, and, and we'll figure out what his request for the con- next contract would be. And then at the executive meeting or the special meeting, we're going to, are we going to vote on something, or deciding?
No, no vote in an executive.
No, no, in a special meeting.
Right, but in a special meeting, you can vote if you come out.
We would come out every day, it's session, if we're.
Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure I know.
If we're ready for a vote, we would come out of executive session and take a vote at that time.
And the, and the vote would either be to look for a new board, or new superintendent, or to extend the contract, or?
Yes, by that time, I think we will have had the opportunity to discuss this enough to know if, if we're in line with Mr. Witt and, or if we're not, and there are only two options, as far as I can tell, either extend Mr. Witt's contract or, or begin a search.
Well, I mean, there could be the third, right? So you could look for new, new people and then have, you know, hold off on extending the contract, and then if we're not able to find someone we think is better, then at that time, extend the contract.
That would just make sense.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I, I follow you. Well, we've got this whole next week, there, we're not tied to anything, so.
Okay.
We, we can certainly make that part of the discussion.
Okay.
And, I mean, this is the first time we've had a chance to really discuss this.
And this has been a wonderful discussion. Tonight has been the best meeting with discussion among the board members. I, I'm liking this, I like this a lot. I did, you're doing a much better job than I did.
Well, it wouldn't go as far as that. I mean, I personally don't like the, the ceiling that is put over us for communication. The sunset laws, I think, really hinder communication, but they are what they are, and last time I checked, there's nothing I can do about it.
Can I just ask one more question for your consideration? Would you be open, would you be open to have, if we see necessary at our executive session, would you be open to extending and having another executive session if further conversation were merited?
I think that we'll have to make that decision as a group when we see where we're at in a week's time, and, and make. And, and make a decision as a board as to, you know, whether we do need more time for that. Yes.
Do I?
There's nothing, uh, there's nothing secretive about this. I mean, it's our job as a board to select a superintendent. And I'm gonna try to be as transparent with all of you as I'm able, that we do this process so that we're all satisfied with the end result. Is, is that, is that clear enough?
That's, I, that's.
That's a best of the compromise.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right then.
Do I have permission to do a search on my own at no cost to the district to see, just send feelers out and see what, what's available?
Certainly. I mean, I, I think this week's time, we can, is a time for us to explore and, and talk to Mr. Witt.
Uh, see where you're at. I would be careful about doing an informal search, a non-official search. You might consider, the board should decide when they're going to do a search so people don't think about the people that are being solicited.
You, you can. You can do a search without soliciting people. I can see just kinda what's.
No, I mean, there, yeah, there couldn't be any strings attached for anything like that.
Keegan, could you just, out of my curiosity, how, what kind of search would that look like? I, how, I mean, you're the expert at that kind of stuff, not me. What would it look like?
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of ways to do passive searches. So you can see a lot of times when people are looking for new work, they, they kinda put that out there. They want to be found by, by recruiters. So they put information out there. Um, and then there's just times where you can kinda hear word through, word of mouth. So there's ways I can search, um, whether it's through LinkedIn or other job boards for people with secret potentials that are open to new work. Um, and see where they're located, um, kinda get an idea of what salaries they're looking at and, and so we can see what's in our budget and salary, um, and then kinda what kind of pool we're looking at.
Something I would caution the board about, each one of us is gonna have a potentially different criteria as to what, as to what each of us are looking for. So I don't wanna venture down that road too far because we need to do this as a group, not one person taking the lead and, and us knowing nothing about that search. So if you want to spend some time and put some feelers out to give us some feedback, but I don't want to do.
Or some criteria.
I don't wanna do a search, a one-person search.
I can also, I can document the criteria I'm looking at so that you can see why I chose people to look at or just so we can see what, we kinda numbers, right? You were saying it was a limited pool. Maybe it's just bringing in how many potentials there are out there.
Okay, well, I personally think that that's a little premature, but if you'd like to do that, you can do that. And I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at your, at your feedback.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? All right. You need the. Oh, yeah.
No, you do.
I'll just. Do we need to take, take a break or do we? Five-minute break. We'll be taking a five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you. I could've just had it out.
I've reached out, I've reached out to our attorney during the break and Keegan, he, he disagrees. He said we shouldn't do that. Someone individually going, doing this. We need to do this as a group. If we're going to search, then we would need to agree as a group on taking the, the approach to that.
Okay, that's fine. Um, so then under what criteria would the board agree to doing a search?
I, I think a, a week from now, we, we'll, we'll go into executive session and, and we'll come to an agreement in that session where we go from there. Whether we sign a new contract with Mr. Witt or we begin a search. Yes, sir.
You will come out of the executive session and vote on which one you do.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we do not do a vote in executive session.
No, no, I, did I, I didn't say that, did I?
I'm just clarifying.
Oh.
Just clarifying.
Oh, okay, thank you. Uh, we will, we'll go have a discussion and then we'll come, we'll come back out here and come to an agreement.
If there is a vote, I guess.
Okay, so then, um, what can, information can I gather or bring to the executive session to be discussed to help the board decide whether or not to conduct a search?
Well, he, he, he was very specific when he said that the, you wouldn't go out looking at individuals individually.
No.
Okay. I mean, I, I don't know. I don't know what you would feel like you were searching for, but I don't want one board member going out and doing their own search per se.
Okay.
You understand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Okay, uh, action items, uh, meeting notice resolution, where is that? Blue tab. Blue tab. Oh, Cassie, would you please read that so I'm not doing it? The resolution?
Yes.
Thank you.
To notification on meeting place, whereas the Colorado Sunshine Act, CRS 24 dash six dash four oh two B declares that all meetings of three or more members of any local public body at which any public business is discussed or at which any formal action may be taken are open to the public at all times. And whereas the Colorado Sunshine Act, CRS 24 dash six dash four oh two C, uh, two C requires a quote, full and timely notice, a quote, to be posted in a designated public place within the boundaries of a school district not less than 24 hours prior to the meeting. And whereas the Colorado Sunshine Act, CRS 24 dash six dash four oh two two C requires that all public place for meetings notice to be designated at the first regular meeting of each calendar date. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of Woodland Park School District RE two as follows, that all public notice of meetings of the Board of Education of the Woodland Park School District RE two will be posted on the district website as well on the bulletin board in the entryway of the administration building at 155 Camper Way, Woodland Park, Colorado in case of technical issues. Adopted January 10th, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Kimbrel. Uh, this requires a vote. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, just should the, um, resolution include a time restraint on there stating that we'll post it 24 hours to the meeting?
It says, it's, it's within the boundaries of the school district, not less than 24 hours prior to the meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to know if we should add that to that bottom section.
Well, it, it seems.
Or the whole thing is the resolution?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And we did, as a board last time, decide that we would publish it on the Monday before, so we have a little bit more.
And sometimes we even do it.
Don't we do it sometimes on Friday? Is that how it was?
Yeah, but with, uh, just as a point of clarification, actually, this sets the requirement.
Right.
Which is compatible with law. As a practice, we tried to do it earlier when possible. But it would be my request to the board, as you consider this resolution, that you not add a constraint to do it. Uh, more, under, under greater constraint than the law.
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Well, I have a motion and I have a second and I, I, roll call, please.
Barclay.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Rusterhold.
Aye.
Motion approved. Uh, next item would be the mill levy certification. Ms. Ryan.
So we are at the one section of your packet. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna start off explaining what the mill levy is.
Thank you.
Okay. So we have the total program, which is the total amount required to fund the school district on an annual basis. And there's two portions to that. There's the state share and the local share. And the local share is the property tax and specific ownership tax. So the total program mill levy is the total number of mills the school district collects from local property taxpayers to fund the local share portion of the total program. So we received the assessed valuation from the Tyler County Assessor, Assessor for 2023, which is the amount right there of the 412 million.
Okay.
And then the next session, section, we have the mills. So the general fund. Is your mic out? Is it on? Can you hear me now?
Just bring it up, turn it down.
It was cutting in and out if you wanted.
I'll try not to move.
I think that my, my, more of a risk factor to it, it doesn't hire jobs.
We can. Go take a break if you want. We'll.
Okay. Is that better?
I just bet.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so Woodland Park School District has a general fund mill levy target of 27 mills based on requirements of bill HB 20 dash 1418. And in 2020, it was 22.55 mills. So you'll see that number there. So it's 2020 and it's collected in 20, year 2021. And then this increases by one mill each year to reach the target of 27. So where we are at right now is the 25.55.
And we're on track.
Yes, we increase that every year purposely to be on track to beat the 27 to the stable. Yeah. And then next we have the credits and abatements. And the mill levy override, which equates to the 1.1 million dollars each year. And that is a voter-approved override. So then our total mills is 28.236, which calculates to the 11 point, or 11,651,000. And then the information that's in that column that I'm pointing to here is actually in the resolution in your packet. And that's all I have unless you have some questions.
Any questions, anyone? No. Yeah, thank you. That was, that was a good description.
Well, I do have a question because I hate taxes. Is there any way we can lower the taxes for people?
I don't have anything.
We have say in that.
It's like it's going out to me.
We do have a say in that, but.
There, there is, do you mind if I respond?
Yep.
Please.
Go ahead.
Please.
Uh, th- there is, um, an, an unprecedented opportunity, uh, which I am in no way endorsing. There is an unprecedented opportunity, of course.
To lower taxes.
To, to not authorize the full mill levy. So boards could consider that. It is not typically done and we, uh, need our education dollars, so I'm not endorsing that action. However, you asked the question. A brave board someday will, will say we can operate in a slightly tighter budget and not take the full mill levy. But it was made, the concept was made more difficult in recent years because now the state backfill is being required to be reduced by increasing the mill levy 1% each year, which creates a legal question of conflict between right authorization and the state mandate that you increase each year. So you absolutely should consult an attorney before undertaking such a consideration.
Yes, thank you.
I know the first thing that we were asked to do is when, when I was elected was to approve this mill levy increase because of a miscalculation in withholding taxes. And I said, wait a minute, I don't wanna do that. And, but it was kinda blindsided and you know, I know that we need the money and we need to make sure that we have the money to, to run our schools, grow our schools and have money in reserve, but is there ever a way to say, no, we're not gonna increase taxes?
In 2027, when the back bill is, is it, is it that when it's complete, 27? We had so many years, correct?
Yeah.
The back, for the back bill.
Twenty, twenty-four.
Yeah, we'll only have a couple more years, only a couple more years.
And you've got this on a ramp that we're gonna hit our goal, 27, yes. Well, I, if that was something a board was so bold as to, uh, take an attempt at, it sounds like there'd be some legal counsel involved.
I'm interested in looking into it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
Thank you for this presentation. Do we need a motion, though?
Yes.
We need, we need, read the, read the resolution. Uh, would Cassie, you wanna read it or some?
Someone else.
Are you out of window?
They might be sick of hearing my voice. I don't know. You wanna do it?
No.
Your blue tab. Oh, I'm sorry. Probably have somewhere else.
I'm gonna read it.
Thank you, Sue. Who's reading it?
I can, I can, I don't care. Okay. So a resolution officially certifying the levy of the Woodland Park School District RE two for the calendar year beginning January 1st, 2024, half fiscal year 2023 to 2024 and half fiscal year 2024 to 2025 to the Board of the County Commissioners. Whereas section 39 dash five dash 128, uh, one CRS requires that Woodland Park School District RE two certify its 2023 levy to the Board of County Commissioners of Tyler County no later than January 10th, 2024. And whereas section 39 dash 10 dash 114, AIB of CRS, um, declare a revised statute, that's what CRS means, which authorizes school districts to certify an abatement and refund the levy in order to recover abatement of taxes. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education, Woodland Park School District RE two. Section 1, current, current to section 39 dash five dash 108, one CRS. As amended, the Woodland Park School District RE two hereby certifies the Board of County Commissioners of Tyler County that the school district 2024 levy on all taxable properties within the county shall be as follow. So the mill levy per HB 20 dash four, uh, 1418, 27 mills, which equates to the 11,141 dollars or 11 million, sorry, 11 million, um, 141,716 dollars. HB 201418 tax credit, which is 1.45 mills, which would, uh, be 5,000, 500,000, 598,351 dollars. So 598,351, which equates the HB 20 line dash 1418 net mill levy, which is the 25.55 mills, equaling 10,543,000 dollars and 365 dollars. So the authorized override is the 2.666 mills, which is 1,100, um, 1,141 dollars. Bond redemption bond, zero mills, zero abatement, point 02, zero mills, at 8,253. Total mill levy, which is 28.236 mills, 11,651,760. Section two of business services is directed to deliver a certified copy of this resolution to the Board of County Commissioners of Tyler County no later than January 10th, 2024. Adopted the 10th day of January, 2024, Woodland Park School District RE two.
Thank you, Dan Long.
I'm glad I did not.
Uh, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Barclay.
Aye.
Bates.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Rusterhold.
Aye.
Motion approved, passed.
I was like looking at the numbers like, oh, wait a minute, I'm, I've got too many commas here, so.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, the 2023 through 2024 revised budget and appropriation resolution. Amy, have you got one left? Uh-oh, you do the computer then.
While you're waiting, I did, uh, the county commissioners did have a special meeting this week and so they should be reducing some of our taxes in the levy. So I heard it's gonna be a little over 2 million and.
2.7.
The 2.7. And so, um, for.
And so uh, for those who were talking about some decreases and getting some money back, uh, there's that and as well as the city. Other special districts and boards don't always have the luxury, especially Netco and fire districts. They're um, they're very necessary in our community and they don't always get the funding and so they probably won't be able to reduce some of those mill levies.
But they were asked.
But they were asked, all special districts and um, all the levels of government were asked by Governor Polis.
Thank you, Cassie. And, and our county commissioners uh, worked very hard on this and they started out at about 2.3 million, was that correct?
That's what I heard.
And went, and then took it on up to 2.7. So that, that's going to be a big help to the taxpayers of Teller County. I'm sure every person in this room saw what the projected taxes were for this year and considers what they'd get for a third job.
We do have bond and then we also, you know, the city has some debt and the county was in a better situation to get back. And so that's sort of why they were able to get back so much is keeping within their budget.
Right. They uh, they worked on their budget to allow for something like this. It was appreciated.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just talking and waiting on Amy. So that's why I always sort of explain them. I would just do a thing. I was just trying to give just, you know.
I was going to offer to sing something.
Boy, I'm glad Cassie had something.
Are we close?
Yeah.
Okay. And it's up.
Yay.
Do you want my cookies? Does anyone want my cookies?
I don't want all of them.
I'm gluten free, you know.
Oh, you don't.
I've got a grandson that only weighs 220 pounds.
Well, I sometimes take them home with my daughter.
It takes a lot of food.
She really enjoyed last year's the cake, like the lone cake treats that we got. Yeah, last December. Yeah. She really enjoyed that.
My middle, my middle scarves them down.
I need to start giving you my cookies.
Okay, I don't wonder if you know the sweetest word. He got a.
Look, there's Amy.
Yeah, I'm ready. Okay. So after the adoption of the budget, the board may review and change the budget with respect to both revenues and expenses at any time prior to March 31st of the fiscal year for which the budget was adopted. So this is something that we do every year in January. Nothing new. Um, and this is our chance to fine tune our budget after the October count, pupil count. And then also we have six months of actuals.
And what is the deadline? You said March?
March 31st.
Thank you.
It's the CDE deadline. Okay, sorry, it's a little small. Um. So this is a high level overview showing the adopted budget compared to the revised. So you'll see that the general fund is decreasing 486,000. And we'll look into that detail on another slide. And then the grant revenue is decreasing 287,000 from the adopted budget. And that's mainly due to SRR3 funds that are not rolling over from fiscal year 2223 because they've been spent.
Okay.
Okay? And then we are allocating 543,000 dollars less, less to capital projects. So the total decrease in revenue is 1.3 million and then we're also reducing expenses by the same amount.
Very good.
More.
So balancing the budget.
Where we go.
Exactly. We're just balancing them.
Stay, stay balanced.
Got it.
Is that a mandate to do that or do some schools, schools not, aren't, aren't able to balance it?
You have to if it's over a certain percentage.
Okay.
Um, CDE requires it. If you really don't have any change, you don't need to do this.
Uh-huh.
Ours is large enough to, to do, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, so now we're on to, this is the appropriation resolution that you'll be signing after this is approved. So this is, again, is pretty much the same information as the slide before. The reason why it's a little bit higher is because the general fund includes the decrease in contingency. So since our expenses are decreasing, the contingency that we're required to budget is decreasing by about 150,000 dollars along with that. Okay, so again, that's comparing the adopted budget to the revised. Um, this slide is just in there for your information so you understand what each one is. I'm not going to go through that in detail. And now we're going to look at the revenue for general fund. Okay. So you'll see the first item listed is total program. And so now you all know what that is, right? It's the state and local shares and that is decreasing because of our October count was less than what we estimated for the adopted budget. And then another um, big change that we have is the universal pre-K was not in the adopted budget. So we have 150,000 dollars added to the revenue for that. We had the expense budgeted, but the revenue was not. So in total, you'll see that amount that we saw earlier, the 486,000, that our revenue is decreasing. I also put in here the audited actuals from last year, so you can kind of use that as a comparison. So all the other revenue categories are basically based on prior year's actuals now that we have those and or a run rate that we have right now. So you'll see these smaller changes. That's what those are based on.
Amy, and as you, the universal preschool is required by statute?
Did I, maybe I shouldn't respond to that?
Yeah, please do.
Universal pre-K is a state-funded program which may be offered by any child's care facility or, or also by schools. It is funded separately, not through the CDE, but through, uh, I mean, it's overseen separately, not through the CDE, but through a commission that is appointed. Uh, but the funding is state-funded. Last year, uh, I gathered that this board would like to continue, uh, plans with universal pre-K and so we did. And so we have universal pre-K classes in each of our elementary schools. We are under no obligation to do that. And this board could at any point decide to discontinue universal pre-K in a subsequent year. Just to be clear.
Thank you.
It, but it is state-funded?
It is state-funded. Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
That means it's taxpayer-funded.
Everybody, yeah. Everybody pays for universal pre-K.
State actually trying to find more money to fund it because they uh, did not allocate for all the money they expected throughout the state.
Okay, we did with revenue?
Yes.
And now the general fund expenditures. So the decrease in instruction and certified is in salaries and benefits and it's mainly due to six months of ver- of vacancies from July through December. So remember I was explaining how we have six months of actuals already? So we already have an underrun in that. And it's a normal thing. I noticed that we've had in prior years. We always end up being a million dollars under budget because we budget assuming every position is filled 100% the entire year. So.
Right.
I have, I have a question about that one.
Okay.
Uh, so that 700, 717,000 dollars is a windfall for the school district, so to speak. It's, you know, do we expect to, that to stay the same? Or are we backfilling our teachers or positions, paid positions? Well, I guess that's a question for Mr. Wes as well.
Let me respond to that. Uh, it is never the case for any organization, including this one, that all positions are filled at all times. So we have to recruit and we have resignations, we fill positions, but there's always a lag. It's part of the one to two month gap that you usually have in filling positions. So while you budget, while we budget for all positions filled, because that's what it would take to have all those positions filled.
Right.
Uh, they're never all filled all the time. So you could expect this gap every year, plus or minus some, a couple hundred thousand dollars probably. Uh, we, we actually kind of hit sort of in the middle of this year, not, we did a little better than normal, but not a lot better than normal. But this is not a, this is not a, uh, we saved 700,000 and in six months we'll save 700,000 more. This is our annual prediction for the underspend on our budgeted payroll.
Thank you. I understand.
Okay, and then in operations and maintenance, we have an increase over the adopted budget of 256,000. And there's two big pieces that make that up. One of them is that our IT equipment and software was not budgeted fully because in prior years it's been covered by SRR. So that was missed in our first adopted budget that we should increase the general fund. Um, and that's basically to purchase Chromebooks and other things like that and then other software that we are continuing to have. It's the annual fees on those.
Ms. Ryan, may I just interject one thing, just to make certain? Every time Ms. Ryan says SRR, that's COVID-19 funding, which has ended.
Right.
Right.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, the COVID-19, we have SRR3 right now, but that cannot be used for computer equipment. There are specific uses for that. And then we had the addition of security staff. And our original budget, we have 2 million dollars of security budgeted capital. So we hired two security staff. So we reallocated from capital to here to cover their salaries and benefits. And then we do have a little bit higher run rate in our repairs and maintenance. So that makes up a small portion of this increase. But if you look at compared to if you compare it to the audited actuals, 2.6 million and we're at 2.7. So it's actually in line with our prior year.
And that's including, weren't there some significant, uh, bores?
Yes.
There were a number of things that had let, gone for quite some time and now we're playing catch up just a little bit in that regard.
That's right. We have a couple of major facilities issues that we're addressing this year. One of which was a boiler that sat inoperable for an extended period of time. It's time to get it back in commission because it's the redundant system for a school. And another is HVAC controls. They were pneumatic in, in ancient times. They're now supposed to be digital. That project was undertaken and was not completed and stalled. We don't, we have no comment as to why. We only now are making sense that it gets completed over a multi-year process because it's very expensive.
But we didn't budget for the boiler to be fixed?
Yes, it's.
It was?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I thought you were saying that that was part of why we were over.
Prior, this is it. From my understanding, it should have been in there, but it was never brought or budgeted prior to.
We didn't realize that it, that it needed to be replaced. The cost was more significant.
Performance.
There was a.
It's an increase.
There was a lengthy survey of the HB of the buildings, the condition of the buildings, which I'm talking primarily HVAC and various things. There were a lot of issues, as Ms. Kimbrel just said, things that have sat for years untouched. And we wanted a full survey of that and it had been lagging for many years.
Okay, so in total, you'll see that our expenses are 496,000 dollars less than the um, adopted budget. And our revenues were 486. So we actually decreased our expenses 10,000 dollars more than our revenues.
Very good.
Too bad I couldn't stay on.
So one other question. Uh, we increased the number of students that we're busing. We've bused all the kids to all the schools, all the district kids to all the district schools.
For those that want it.
Yeah, yeah. No, we forced them to.
Okay, somebody.
So, but we have a decrease in transportation funds?
So that, sorry. The transportation and general fund that you're seeing there is to transport students. It's not to and from school. That's not what this transportation is.
It's other, other.
Transportation that we have drivers do in the district.
Moving them between.
Sorry. Moving them between schools and things like that.
All our white vans and stuff.
Okay. Got it.
We have a, sorry, we have a separate fund for the Durham that you're talking about. Any other questions on this?
Just because the question is out there, we should give you the, I would like to give you the full answer. There was no cost increase for transportation in announcing the total opportunity transportation for all students with your help.
Thank you. Thank you.
But we actually increased our revenue because we're, we have more students riding the bus that are paying the fee.
So the buses are full or more full and?
Yes.
Fuller. Full, fuller. And so we're getting, we're making more money per bus.
Okay.
Right.
Understood.
So this is the specific budget re- resolution number two. And for general fund. The general fund expenditure from reserves.
Would you just like this microphone?
We can share mine here.
It is too, here, maybe if I just got closer.
Mine seems to work.
Is it? Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, the general fund expenditure from reserve of 2 point, or 2,961,219. It's right down there. Is 10,000 dollars less than resolution number one, which is the 10,000 dollars I explained earlier because our expenses decreased more than our revenue. And then this bottom section lists each of the funds and their fund balances. And these also, these also changed because of the completion of our fiscal year 2223 audit. So our actual fund balance has changed. And then this is what I showed you earlier in a previous slide on slide five. I showed you a comparison of this compared to the adopted, but this is the actual resolution for the revised. So this is, lists all of our expenditures and the reason why the general fund looks so high is because that includes contingency and labor reserve. That's all I have.
Any other, any questions?
There, uh, could you address the money that, uh, there was an odd thing about the election expenses for holding the election this year and I had some questions about that. The approximately 11,000 dollars for, for the school board election, or for elections is what is listed.
So do you want to know what the 11,000 is for? Is that what you're asking?
Right. I just thought that the public would want to know that. I, I, I know what. Right, I just thought that the public would want to know that. I, I, I know what it is now.
Okay.
But.
So that's for the Teller County clerk. That's their charge for the administration of the election.
Right. And I understand it's significantly less, less than half of what it normally is because of the error that the contractor made when they were printing the ballots. So what normally would have been over twenty thousand dollars, we saved some money on that and it was only the eleven is what I.
Yes, that's correct.
Because that vendor covered the cost. So that reduced the number, you said double, uh, reduced it.
Yep.
Yeah, so they didn't charge us at all. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct.
They didn't charge us at all for the ballots where normally they would, so.
Yeah, it was just an interesting thing to see in the budget, election. And until I knew, well, anyway, I was gonna, it's a joke, but it probably wouldn't be funny.
So that's every other year we'll have that usually, so.
And the money for elections, it's for the brand with vendors, I think the machines used, election judges, the staff.
The cost from the clerk recorder's office.
Right.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, let me read this resolution. This is shorter, I can do this.
You want me to read it?
Being resolved by the Board of Education of the Woodland Park School District, R E two, in Teller County, that the amounts shown in the following schedule be appropriated to each fund as specified in the budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-three and ending on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve? So move. Wait a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Motion approved, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry, roll call, thank you.
Barkley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Ruster Holtz?
Aye.
I knew that question. President Bates, you will also need a motion on the specific budget resolution number two. Really one you can read very well, you just need to ask for a motion to approve.
Okay, yeah, there isn't a specific resolution in here. Uh, specific budget resolution number two. Do I have a motion to a, for approval?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barkley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Kimbrel?
Aye.
Patterson?
Aye.
Ruster Holtz?
Aye.
Thank you, Amy. I know that was a lot to, a lot of work to do and thank you for explaining it to us. Okay, uh, moving on now to Board of Education reports. Operations reports, uh, any, any comments from any of the board members?
Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to read the, um, the press release.
Okay, certainly. There were a number of them, so I wasn't sure which one you meant.
The Woodland Park School District is pleased to announce that the national, as I touched on before, is one of, one of the many things that Mr., that Superintendent Witt has accomplished. Woodland Park School District is pleased to announce it's a national collegiate athletics association, the N C A A. Has reviewed and approved the enhanced curriculum of three courses at the Woodland Park High School, submitted after adopting the American birthright standards this academic year. The Woodland Park School District is thrilled to report that these classes have been officially approved for N C A A credit. So, and also the American birthright standards adopted in Woodland Park School District to improve students' understandings of fundamental American principles and values have expanded and enriched the education of the Woodland Park High School students in the civics and history classes. I'm pretty proud of that.
Yes. Very. Anything else?
Oh, yeah, I'm not gonna read all of it, but just a short summary and it was mentioned in public comment, but two of the Woodland Park School District schools, Columbine Elementary, Summit Elementary, have earned a national rising star nomination for excelling in implementing capturing kids' hearts in their first year using the program. This re- recommend, um, recognition and highlights the school's commitment to cultivating a positive school culture. Both Columbine and Summit Elementary have been dedicating to the principles of the capturing kids' hearts and, um, the kids are establishing a safe and positive learning environment where students are valued or respected and engaged.
Good, good.
Exciting, yes.
I like good news. Anyone else? There were two or three resolutions. Do you have one?
I do.
Please, move ahead.
You know, I really liked the capturing kids' heart. There was a lot of talk about, um, what were we gonna do without the government provided social workers at all of the schools? And, uh, you know, there was a lot of questions about some of the things that the way we were doing certain things, supporting kids and, and teachers in the schools. There was a lot of concern about that and what would happen to kids in difficult situations. And I was so happy to see and to hear from other teachers and a principal that how much they like the capturing kids' hearts and how it, it connects more and more with the teachers and, and with other kids. Uh, I was very impressed with that, so, uh, yeah. And then to see our schools acknowledged on, on a bigger scale like that was really good to see. You know, we, we need to look for the positive things wherever we can find them. Uh, you know, and another thing for, uh, for a press release that we had, which is, I thought was wonderful, that the State Board of Education released its school and district performance frameworks. And all six of Woodland Park Schools earned S P F points sufficient for rating of performance in the, which is also the highest rating. And I thought that, that is really good, that's.
Big deal.
It is, that, that is a big deal. Also, the, uh, and I'm skipping through to the highlights of these. The official school performance frameworks and the district performance frameworks were released on December thirteenth. They evaluate districts and schools based on key performance indicators such as academic achievement, academic growth, and post-secondary and workforce readiness. And that, that's, that's a big deal because those ratings are determined by the accumulation of points across these indicators with the State Board of Education establishing specific cut points for accreditation ratings. So our schools are doing very well. Uh, and another thing is skipping down just a little bit, that the Woodland Park Middle School and Merit Academy, uh, Academy, notably Woodland Park Middle School and have achieved scores higher than seventy-five, demonstrating a commitment to academic excellence. And I skipped that. It's notably Woodland Park Middle School and Merit Academy have achieved scores higher than seventy-five. So it, that is an academic excellence indicator. I, I think that it's, it's really, really good. So, I mean, there's some other good things here, but, uh, I think, I think that with the turmoil that is back and forth between our, our community, I really think that we can, we can come together if we choose to come together and find common ground. There's almost always common ground. And, you know, in, in my short life experience, that if we choose to be friendly and kind and find those areas that we can work together and sit down and have coffee. You know, I've offered even have co, have coffee with you. I love reaching out to you because you and I can find common ground because I'm willing to.
We don't have common ground.
You're a good man and I'm looking for the good, so anyway, anyway.
I wanted to.
So, so, so let me just finish with my.
Wrap it up.
Let me, let me finish. I don't think there's any time limit on me being able to talk.
No, but I want to add to your comment when you're done.
So, yeah, so go ahead.
Well, I want to address, there was something that was mentioned tonight and we used to have students come in and parents, and that was something. But the parents in the room has been so contentious and families did not want to bring their kids here to demonstrate to the board. And so we would like to bring that back if possible, if we can all act like adults and really demonstrate that to our parents. We, I mean, because we want to see that. I have a great keychain and we've had students in here before. I want the students to come back and do that. And it's, we were having parents saying, we don't want to be here when it's so contentious. So I, I'm asking for all of us to do it. I think tonight is a great example of it and we can continue that. And I hope we can have some of our students highlight some of the great staff, stuff they're doing. Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I, I just want to add to, to that point. I think you're right, if, if we can all work together. But I think as, you know, as a board, we need to take some responsibility for that as well. We need to do our part to make sure that people don't feel that the only way they have to communicate is coming here in a contentious way. Um, so, you know, responding to emails when they come through, um, you know, making sure we're doing our part to make this a nice place to come as well.
Very good.
Okay.
Uh, Keegan, I made a remark at the beginning of the meeting that was public, so I want to publicly apologize to you for our challenges in communication. And, uh, that should have been dealt with in a different way, so we'll, we'll get it worked out, but, uh, I apologize. Okay, there being any, any other business? There being no other business, meeting adjourned.
We need a motion.
I need, I need a motion.
Oh, gee.
To adjourn, a roll call to adjourn.
A roll call, oh, motion, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, no.
Second.
Roll call.
Barkley?
Aye.
Bates?
Aye.
Kimbrel?
No, I.
Patterson?
Aye.
Ruster?
Aye. Hey, bear with me. In the next couple of years, I'll get this figured out.
Hey, it took me a while too.
It's a little time to get the flow.
Thank you all.
How many little ones you got?
They're all sugar.
Now we got the whole, now we got the whole family coming.
When I approached, try and talk to you at a board meeting before I was fired, you walked away from me.